Good evening, everybody. The April 24th, 2024 special meeting of the Malibu City Council is now called to order. A reminder that public comment can only be for the items listed on the agenda. In-person participants, if you'd like to speak, please submit your request to speak form to the clerk on my right. Remote participants, if you'd like to speak, please join the Zoom webinar meeting printed on the agenda and raise your hand in Zoom when the item you wish to speak on is called. Kelsey, do we get a roll call?
Councilmember Chrisanti.
Here.
Councilmember Riggins.
Here.
Councilmember Silverstein.
Present.
Mayor Protem Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Yurin.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Paul, could you lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Certainly.
Raise your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Mayor, before that, if I could give you a brief report. The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on April 19th, 2024.
Thank you very much. Now can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I move to approve the agenda.
Need a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay, we're ready to move. Item, any, any public comments anywhere in Zoom?
We don't have any speakers at this point, but would you like to hear the staff presentation first?
I do, but I have one before we do that. Mayor, I mean, no, Mayor, Steve, do you have any announcements you'd like to make tonight? Because if you don't, I do.
Mr. Mayor, I would defer to you if you want to go ahead and make that announcement.
No, you go, please do.
Okay, if, I'm sorry, just give me a moment and I will get to that sheet of paper here. So, yeah, thank you. I'm very happy to announce that the city received quite an award today, quite a nice recognition. The California Building Officials, which is known as by the acronym CALBO, it's a state organization of city and county building departments and industry representatives. This association is comprised of over 500 California cities and counties, and today, the city of Malibu was presented with the CALBO Building Department of the Year Award.
All right.
This award recognizes, and according to CALBO, this award recognizes the outstanding leadership demonstrated by a jurisdiction, which we certainly have here, and to win this award, a department must meet strict criteria, showing dedication to building safety through effective long-term disaster response, we know how important that is, environmental sustainability, also very important here, and progressive technological practices. The Environmental Sustainability Department has made significant strides in these topics, promoting building safety, innovation, and community engagement, and have shown remarkable adaptability and been at the forefront of providing essential services and care to the Malibu community. So, yeah, again, please join me in celebrating this remarkable achievement for the CALBO Building Department of the Year Award to the city of Malibu.
Great, thank you very, Yolanda, thank you very, very much. That's the best in the state, right? In the state, so admirable. All right, Joe, staff report if you would please.
All right, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, tonight's workshop is only the first draft of the fiscal year '24-'25 proposed budget. There will be edits and corrections as we proceed through the adoption process, and there's probably even some edits already tonight that we've noticed since we've first published the report. And really, budgets are only a point in time. They're a projection of the next year, not meant to be perfect, but meant to be a guide, and they're ultimately a policy document of the city on where the funding goes for the priorities of the city, which is for this policy body. This is the first of four times that this will be in front of council or the subcommittee. We're doing the workshop today. We will be taking it to the Administration and Finance Subcommittee next month, technically five times if we count the grants as well, because those will be split up between two meetings with A&amp;F. We'll have the budget hearing at the end of May and then budget adoption, hopefully budget adoption at the end of June for the final look and review of the City Council. And tonight, we're looking for your feedback and direction, and we will incorporate any of your direction into the future iterations of the budget. And I'd be remiss if I didn't give a huge thank you to Renee Nierman and all of her efforts and time and extra hours and weekends she spent pulling this all together, so thank you, Renee.
Pulling it together on itself.
Yes, we're still, we're trying, we're trying to improve, but we're still doing some manual processes, so it's a yeoman's effort. A little bit of orientation, we'll be referring to a number of things throughout, we'll be referring to actuals, which are really the prior year close, those are numbers that are finite and firm. We'll be talking about the adopted or the current year budget, that would have been what was adopted last year in June, and the current year is what we're working through. The revised, adjusted, or amended, it can be referred to a number of different ways, but that's the current year budget that's been adjusted through maybe different staff reports, agreements, things that have come on throughout the year, mid-year adjustments, those sorts of things. That's how you go from an adopted budget to an amended budget. And then we're talking about the proposed budget, and the proposed budget is the next year's budget. So a little bit of an overview, we'll go over our development calendar, the next steps, we will touch on our revenues and expenditures, we'll look at the fund balance, we'll go through each department and talk about all the great things each department is doing with the budget, and then we'll touch on a summary in our next steps. So it's a, it's a long process to develop the budget. We kicked off at the end of January with the departments. We then opened up the, and throughout the last few months, we've been developing the budget, firming up the numbers as best as possible. In March, we had the general fund grant application, which closed at the end of March. Then this month, we're doing review, analysis, development, developing the city manager's proposed budget, and then we get to the workshop today. And then subsequent to this, we'll have the two A&amp;F meetings, we'll have a public hearing, and hopefully adoption at the end of June. So this is really just to give you a visual of our budget, not going to drill into each individual item, but as you can see, the general fund is the bulk of our budget. Our total revenues are about $84 million, with 60 million of that as the general fund, or 71 and a half percent being general fund, and then similarly, our expenditures follow suit, so $96 million in total expenditures, with $72.5 million being general fund, or 77 percent being general fund. And also, the general fund, which we'll focus on here, is where you have most of your discretion. So our total general fund revenues are 60 million. The bulk of our revenues are made up with property tax, transient occupancy tax, and sales and use tax, and the TOT taxes and the sales and use taxes are in the other taxes category you see there. So our two major categories, property taxes and other taxes, we get about just shy of 20 million in property taxes, about a third of our revenue, and then other taxes are about, just nearly 24 million. And then how that is spent across the departments, we have total general fund expenditures of $59.45 million for the upcoming year. Our two largest departments are Public Safety and then Management and Administration. So Public Safety, obviously a big priority of the city, that's where we spend most of our dollars. $16.4 million goes to Public Safety, or just shy of 28 percent. And then Management and Administration, which is a lot of different divisions, and we'll get into that shortly, is 15 million, or 25.6 percent of the budget. And then it's broken out by the rest of the departments. You have environmental sustainability at almost 15 percent, you have planning at 10.6 percent, public works at 9.3, and community services 7.7 percent. And then we also have disaster response, which is really, really sort of an extension of a few different departments helping with that, but that goes to all of our winter storms, any disasters we have, fires, and so on, and so that number will fluctuate depending on what issues we have to deal with. So we tried to clear out some of the one-time dollars to give you a better sense of what's ongoing funds. Our total revenue, and this shows more clearly on the fund balance summary page, on page one of your budget, our total revenues are 60.3 million, but you take out the disaster capital and then add back in, the transfers in, and we have just about 60 million in total ongoing general fund revenue. And then our total expenditures are 59.5 million. And so where we're at right now with the draft proposed budget, we're showing about a $550,000 surplus, but that could fluctuate as we're trying to finalize some of the different capital projects, or any direction we get today, or some of the different iterations that happen as we go through this adoption process. So our general fund reserves, this is also, or this is a historical look back on our reserves, and you can see that we've started to stabilize right around 68 million in undesignated reserves, so that's the bottom green or teal bar, and then above that is the designated reserve, so those are identified for specific things. But where we're at right now, estimating about 68 million, and some of that could fluctuate this year, heading into next year, depending on where we finish with a lot of our capital projects, or some of our expenditures as well. But you can see we've grown significantly, we did pretty well post-recession, and we did much better than we thought we would do post-pandemic. So we're in a very good financial position, which gives this council a lot of leeway to make some strategic decisions going forward. And this is a closer look at our current year, heading in, or our previous year closed, the current year, and then heading into next year, and so you can see that breakout just a little bit better. And the big change, you might be looking at that designated line where it goes from 17 million to almost 27, and then back down to 15 million, that's really capital projects, so there's a bit of swing on expenditures there, but otherwise, our undesignated is staying relatively flat. And we tried to put this into one slide, but here's our personnel, we have just about 119 total FTE, we have 100 We have 106.5 full-time employees, and then 12.28 part-time FTEs heading into next year's budget. Some of the staffing changes, we're looking to add a management analyst in the management and administration department. We're adding a half-time or part-time deputy city clerk. We're adding an administrative assistant in public safety. We have a senior permit services tech at halftime in environmental sustainability. We're adding a parks maintenance worker in community services. And then with the shuffling of part-time positions and creating some of those part-time regular positions, it actually resulted in a net decrease on the part-time positions in community services. So the final tally of changes is we're going up just about three and a half FTE in next year's budget. We, as is accustomed to the city, we do a cost of living adjustment annually based on the February regional CPI. That number was 3.4 percent this year, and we're estimating that to be roughly $440,000. And then we did the class and comp study, which we presented to city council on April 8. We're estimating that impact to be about 500,000. And when we first started the class and comp last year, or heading into this current fiscal year, we set aside about $750,000 roughly. So, you know, we did a swag, and we ended up coming in under that. And so we're absorbing that fully in our budget. And then for CalPERS, our rates for the upcoming year, 20.31 percent for classic members, that's the contribution rate, and then for the PEPRA members, those are employees hired in 2013 and beyond, that's 8.18 percent. And then, of course, with all of these, we're trying to do our best to fill vacancies and fill everything. We've done a ton of efforts, thanks to this council and the strategic work plan, which we'll touch on more. But of course, the class and comp, that was a huge tranche in our efforts to do that. And we've already hearing positive feedback from current employees and prospective employees. So that's a very attractive item. And of course, we added the winter break, which was a very successful positive effort. And we're doing tons of other things as well with training and development programs. We're trying to increase employee engagement. We have more employee events and gatherings. We're working on process improvement across the organization, which you'll hear about more tonight with some of the departments. And of course, our HR team, who, which we were down to one HR person in our department for most of the past year. And we carried the mantle as much as possible. We're finally filling out that team, and I do want to give a shout out to Alicia Freeman, who has spent countless hours keeping this organization going. So you don't know just how much hard work goes on behind the scenes to try to fill positions, it's a long slug. But we're filling out our team, we've hired an HR manager, Michelle Cook, who's amazing. We've had Mary Bradley Ortiz, who's been helping out, or Mary Ortiz Bradley, who's been helping out as an interim HR manager. We are just about to hire an HR tech. And then we're digitizing our records in HR, we're working on a new recruitment software we're just going live with right now. And so we're doing everything we can to streamline operations and make our recruitment efforts better. So we haven't gone into the grant applications yet, that'll come up at the A and F meeting next month. But so far, we've gotten 24 applications totaling $575,000. That's pretty similar to where we were at last year as well. And so the A and F will be able to go through that and hopefully interview a bunch of the nonprofits and determine where we want to fund that. And again, we have about 200,000, or we do have 200,000 in the budget set aside for general fund grants. So I'm going to go through some of the major variances of departments. So management and administration, we're actually decreasing our budget by 750,000. The main driver of that was the placeholder we put for class and comp. So in non-departmental, it's going down 625,000 while we had set aside. So there's some offsetting numbers there, we'd set aside about 750,000 for class and comp, but the net decrease is in non-departmental at 625,000, so that's the bulk of it. But going back up, city council, if you recall, this year, we gave a one-time grant to the Malibu Education Foundation of 350,000. That, it was a one, those were one-time dollars, so we didn't continue that into the subsequent fiscal year, fiscal year 2425 in the proposed budget, so that decreases. In the media team, we're moving a media analyst to information systems as an IS tech to try to build out more of our IS services, but still supporting media operations. So that's really a wash, but in that division, it looks like a decrease. In the city manager's budget, we're adding a management analyst. We touched on the non-departmental, and then city hall, that's really just maintenance of the building. So we've added some more funds there to do leasehold improvements like carpet, painting, and just general maintenance of the building that's due. In the city clerk department, the budget is slightly increasing at about 150,000. You know, every other year, we have a major election, and so we're putting in some funds there for $45,000. And then we have some assistance for ongoing projects, so we have a 50 percent FTE or halftime FTE as a deputy city clerk that will be added to the budget. Public safety, the net result is just shy of 400,000 decrease, and this is really due to the sheriff's substation being delayed due to their ongoing staffing constraints. So we're not sure when that will open. We had put a significant growth factor in this year, assuming the substation would open, but they are having a really hard time hiring new officers. But that is offset a little bit by California Highway Patrol contract. So we put a significant amount of funds in the budget to help with PCH. And then the public safety department is looking to add an administrative assistant to help with all the different functions that they have. Community services has a net reduction of 270,000, but they are adding a parks maintenance worker, full FTE. Environmental sustainability is going up by about 743,000. So they are looking to put in to the budget 500,000 for the new exterior elevated elements program, E3, which is a state requirement. But that will be fully offset by revenue, or at least that's our anticipation. And then they have a halftime FTE of a senior permit services tech that will be added to the budget. And then planning's remaining mostly net neutral. They're relatively flat from the current year heading into next year. And we're hopeful with all of our recruitment retention efforts that we start to see a rebalancing of where we're at with contract planners and contract support staff and permanent staff. So hopefully that'll start shifting. Public works is decreasing by 470,000 from the current year to next year, and that's mostly due to purchasing less vehicles and also anticipating some less services on the engineering side for different projects. And then public works, we'll get into the capital improvement plan, and I'll touch on some highlights at the end of their presentation. But we currently have 30 projects slated for next year at 23.3 million. The bulk of the funding is from grant funds or state funds at 12.3 million. We have about 11 million in general fund, and then we have about 300,000 case cramer, which is related to the skate park. A few other things related to the budget that we wanted to touch on, the fee schedule. So we brought a fee schedule to A and F on April 10. The A and F Subcommittee recommended no changes at this time, keep it flat heading into next year, because we do have a fee study in process. It's our first fee study since fiscal year 2015, 16, long overdue. And we are anticipating to report back to council very early in the fiscal year 2425 and hopefully implement those, that new schedule at that time. Another big component, as we're working through all the different projects we have, is the development services study, where we had 46 different recommendations. A few of the most significant heading into the next fiscal year, improving workplace climate or culture. We've really come a long ways on that already. And the numbers next to the bullets are just the recommendation, the associated recommendations in the Baker-Tilly report. We're also working with the Policy Ad Hoc Committee to go over different roles, responsibilities, going over code of conduct, and that'll also help. One of the big recommendations there is the community development department, so we are looking at that. We anticipate coming back in some of these additional iterations of the budget with more recommendations on that and discussing it with A and F as well. The first step in doing that would really be creating a director position. We anticipate that we would be able to handle that in the budget, but we'll discuss it more. We still need to flesh out what a community development department would look like and how to implement that. But that is one of the biggest recommendations from the report. And then, of course, the land management system is also a huge undertaking. We've come a long ways with the efforts that our related departments have worked on, environmental sustainability, planning, have just released a new portal that is a huge step towards a land management system. That'll be the, for the applicants and on the front end, will feel a lot like a true land management system. Unfortunately, it's not the full system, it's not from beginning to end, which a land management system would allow us, but it gets us part of the way there, especially with the dashboard components and the reporting components on it, so people can see where their projects are. But we still need to do a full land management system, that'll probably take a couple years to do. We are putting it into our projects, roughly estimating it to be about 1.5 million over two years. So we put 750,000 into next year's CIP. But our new portal should really give us a lot of cover as we try to develop that land management system and help us make our lives a little bit easier as we're trying to build it out. And it already shows us what our workflows should be like, all the work that staff have done. We're really in the vein of process improvement, we started last summer. We mapped our systems, we mapped our flow, and we realized that, you know, we had done a lot of things during the pandemic to try to make it easier on applicants, but never really changed how we did things. We basically just took a paper process and put it online, and it made things even more cumbersome. And so now we're finally streamlining that and headed in the right direction. And I think that's been very welcomed from applicants and all stakeholders alike. And then our strategic work plan, great effort last year, we had multiple work sessions, and then we finally adopted our top 20 projects in September of 23. We provided updates in December and February, and we started to do some new goal setting, and we initiated that last month. We're still going to come back and continue to do that, department heads and staff. We're going to start working on mapping some of our existing work plan and putting out better project milestones on that. And also, there should be a lot of meetings occurring internally, also some meetings with the city council members to further build out the goals and update our priority projects, and with the ultimate goal of alignment across goals of the city council and our projects. So I'm going to pause there to see if there's any questions on the broad overview before we get into department updates and presentations.
Any questions, comments?
I know there was a talk of an implementation of Blue Beam to help out with the staff side of the development process. What is the status of that?
Yes, Councilmember Riggins, thank you for bringing that up. We're still in the process of doing that. We're actually in the training mode right now on that. And I believe we're actually pretty close to going live on it. Yeah.
Good evening, City Council. Blue Beam will be a software system that will help us be more streamlined on the plan check process. This software is specific to do plan check. In the past, the city has been using just a PDF to conduct our normal plan check. That takes a lot of hours from staff. With this, with Blue Beam, we'll have the ability to be like any other jurisdictions, more streamlined, the process, easy communications with the engineers and consultants. Training already started, staff already attended the first round of training in person. A virtual training is being set up for the second week of May, and we anticipate early June to start utilizing this software. Staff right now is, little by little, getting acquaintance with this software. It's something new, but it's definitely will be a very successful tool that will make us do our job the way we are supposed to do it.
Thank you, Yolanda.
Thanks, that's on the building plan check size, the planning, are they going to be using it also?
Yes, it's for the entire development. It includes building, environmental health, public works, planning department, our geotechnical team, our cost engineering, our biology, every, every single department will be part of it.
I think the planning director might be.
So to speak for us specifically, we've actually started to use it. We're still working through the trainings, but my folks are using it to play around with it. For example, one of the features we really like as we get questions are the, are the architects being truthful when they say a house is X amount of square feet. So for the last planning commission meeting, I thought that'd be a great opportunity. We ran the plans through and verified square footages. So little by little, we are starting to use it and look forward to a full implementation.
Thank you, it sounds very exciting. I'm sure that'll make the planning commission very happy to have that assurance of accuracy.
And one component, one component to add to that is, Blue Beam is really the industry standard as well for checking plans, and so it'll flow very well into a land management system.
Go.
Oh, one quick question on presentations, and I kept looking for it. Is there an IT department analysis or presentation, or is that all incorporated everywhere else? It just, just like the HR department's is standalone, I just wondered, where do we see the IT operation?
Yeah, our information services or systems is in management and administrative services, so it's a division of that larger umbrella department. HR is also a division of that, finance is a division of that. But we don't have it as its own department to call out.
Okay, so it's expenses, or it's, it's allocated out to all the business units, is that the way?
Correct, correct.
All right.
Anybody else? As we go forward, I'm assuming, because when I flip through this, all the stuff you covered in the overview is going to be covered when we go through each one of the individual departments, I think, is that a fair?
Yeah, so we're drilling down now into the departments on things that are being accomplished this year. Well, an overview of the upcoming budget, things that are being accomplished in the current fiscal year, goals for the next fiscal year. There will be some crossover on the high-level overview, but this will be more at the department level.
How do you want questions, you want us to wait till you get done, you want to do them by department? You tell us what works for you.
I would say let each department go, and then maybe when we get to the end of the slide for the department, if you have a question for that specific department, that'll probably help, just in case any of your questions are answered along the way.
Do questions on a departmental basis, as you say, okay, cool. Bruce?
Before I forget, I can take a note. I had asked before if we could get actual hard copies of these PowerPoint presentations, because they're much easier to follow than the dense report. And I think the public would benefit from having it also. So obviously, it's too late this time, but we're going to have more workshops or more meetings in these. I would, I would like if it's possible to get these in advance of the meeting and have it publicly available as well, so that the public can follow along more easily or look at it at their leisure.
Sure, the next iterations coming forward, that'll be much easier than tonight's as we were still trying to finalize it going into tonight, but absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, we will start with management and administrative services. So we have a number of divisions within our department, but the main ones are really city council, media operations, city manager, legal counsel, finance, HR, non-departmental, information systems, and then city hall operations. That's really where most of the operations are occurring. Media, responsible for communications and public relations. City manager carries out the policies and directives of the council. Legal is our contracted services for attorney work. Our city clerk administers the democratic processes such as elections, city records, the council meetings, and so much more. Finance, all of our financial reporting, payroll, accounts payable, the act for the budget. HR, obviously recruitment and all personnel support of the city. Our non-departmental is sort of our catch-all department for anything that's not specific to one department. Information system supports all the networks of the organization. And then city hall operations is really the maintenance of our city facilities. So the total budget for the department is 20.3 million. 15.2 million of that is special revenue, with the other 5.1 being, or 15.2 is general fund dollars, and then 5.1 is special revenue. We have 24 full-time equivalents, and we are requesting 1.06 million in this year's budget. That's made up of that 750,000 for land management systems in the upcoming year. That'll be spread over two years, so a total of 1.5 million is our rough estimate at this time. 150,000 for a management analyst, and 160,000 for leasehold improvements like painting, HVAC work, general maintenance. Some of our accomplishments, the 22nd consecutive Excellence in Financial Reporting Award, we received that. Great job, yeah. Thank you, Renee. Our strategic work plan focusing on the top 20 priorities, updating that was a great effort and collaborative effort with department heads and the city council. Our comprehensive development services review as we continue to work through all of those recommendations. We did kick off an IS strategic and cybersecurity plan, which we were just starting to get back the draft report on that. And we've done so much more, but of course, I'd be remiss, we didn't mention our amazing deputy city manager Alexis Brown as well. We welcomed her to the organization this past year. So goals and objectives in the upcoming fiscal year, we're continuing to work on workplace culture with recruitment and retention efforts. I already touched on many of the things we're doing. Initiating a land management system, and that would be a full land management system. Doing some of those maintenance work that I touched on, implementing a new fee study and hopefully finalizing permanent trailer for MCLE. And of course, that's not all of our goals, but those are just some of the highlights. Some issues we have coming up, there's a ballot initiative this fall called the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act. This could go back and remove any approved tax measures and that would include our TUT measure that was adopted in 2022. So that could be a loss of, you know, upwards of 4 million of what we're currently bringing in. So that could be a, a big issue for us in a lot of other cities. Another issue is interest rates. Currently, we're earning higher interest rates than we have in many, many years. That could quickly change. It doesn't look like it will right now as the feds haven't gone that direction, but there's been a lot of anticipation that rates will start going down. But with rates staying where they're at, it could also make borrowing dollars, taking on debt for capital projects difficult. So there's a lot of balancing we have to do and consider with interest rates. And then as an organization, we continue to grow to provide all the services and the demand, to meet the demands of the city and the community. And we are pretty much reaching max capacity for office space here at city hall. So that's an issue as we continue to try to add positions to the organization. So in summary, for our department, we're adding a management analyst. We're continuing to work on strategic work plan. We're going to start on a land management system and that's really the entire organization, even though we're touching on it here. There's that ballot initiative that could impact our TUT revenue and we're running out of space at city hall.
Any questions, comments? Anybody? Mary Ann?
So what's the primary function of the management analyst going to be?
Sure. Management analyst is really a generalist and so they can jump on any special project. They can jump into a department, dig down and help a department out on anything they're working on. As you know, we have a ton of different initiatives that we're trying to do at the city and there's only so much bandwidth in the city manager's office. So this position would help with all those projects, could help with the budget. They're also the future leaders of an organization. So they help with succession planning. You put a management analyst into the organization, they're generalists, they jump into departments, they learn the entire organization and also learn a lot of leadership ability. And often your management analysts become your future city managers. And so we want to add that position. We've also considered adding two positions, but we're going to start with one at this time.
Okay. And then can you give us a little bit more idea of the strategic work plan where we're going to see that back again and kind of reorganizing? Because I know several things did get completed from the last iteration.
Yeah, and we, our existing strategic plan, we're due for an update, so we'll, we'll come back with that on where we're at with all the existing projects. Obviously, we tried to do the new goal setting and we had to change plan a little bit, or change the course a little bit. But we are going to start next month, probably the end of the month, doing more of the milestone setting on some of the existing projects and focus areas. And then we'll be doing some reprioritization. So probably the next couple of months, we'll have some more updates coming on that process. But I don't have a, I don't have a specific timeline off the top of my head on what the due dates are.
Is there a, a goal that in the future that might coincide with the budget?
Yes.
So that those are okay.
Yeah, we want to bring that back. So we decoupled it in the last iteration, just because we were falling out of sequence and we had, you know, the 170 projects. It wasn't really aligned with the budget, so we decoupled it. But we'd want to bring that back and realign all those projects with the dollars that would need to support them.
Perfect, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Doug? A quick question on the strategic work plan. Is there anything that you're seeing coming up? And as Mary Ann pointed out, you closed some items out. So theoretically, you've got the capacity to take something new on. Anything that you envision would need to be considered in the budget or is the, or what, does it have any impact on the budget, I guess?
Well, that, are you looking for me to commit to another project? Mayor Protemster?
Sure.
We would have to bring the update back.
I've got several on my list.
Yes, I know, I know. There's a, there's a laundry list. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure which projects we completed. We'd have to bring the update back, but of course, there was, there were plenty of items, you know, almost on, on that virtual parking lot or items that we knew that were sort of next up in the next tier. But of course, things change, right? PCH safety wasn't even part of our dialogue and that's become all-consuming for the organization. And so we have to remember when those things come up, that delays other efforts out there because we only have so much bandwidth.
What I was really looking for, is there anything that you think we need to put a marker for in the budget? Not necessarily specifying a particular item, but a placeholder, for lack of a better word.
Initially, no. I think, I feel like we have everything covered and if there are any items, we have the fund balance. Obviously, we'd have to bring a new item back if we're going to do, say, an RFP for something or if there's another stage of an effort that we need to bring back, we'd likely need to be appropriating funds anyways into the future. So at the current moment, no. I would say no, there's not necessarily anything.
The one that I'm thinking about, just to give you an idea, is speed cameras. And as the city manager and I've talked about it, we don't need to wait for that to get passed, assuming that it will, to get started on it. So we can, it's probably going to be impactful on the 24, 25 budget if we go ahead with it.
Go ahead.
Yeah, we could, I think that's a good point. I think we could probably identify some, some, some funds for that and get that in there as a, as a placeholder with the, I hope that they get the legislation through because yeah, we want to be able to move forward on that as quickly as possible. So yeah, I think Joe and I can, can work on something like that and get that in there if council would like that.
I think that's what I would.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, I got a couple. Management analyst, give me a little more detail on what that person's going to do because I'm trying to figure out why we're better off having that versus trying to figure out how we fill some of these slots that are currently open in the, in the departments to basically do the same thing, right? I mean, as opposed to having somebody jump down if I got that slot filled.
No, management analyst wouldn't conflict with any of the day-to-day operations or the work that departments are already doing. Management analysts really become jack-of-all-trades and specialists. It's really the higher level project. So say like PCH safety, you know, we really don't have a ton of people to work on that, but a management analyst could dig in and do a lot more of the research and help, help your deputy city manager, help your assistant, help your city manager jump into those types of efforts. A lot of things that maybe we didn't anticipate, they can jump in on. It's really a standard position across organizations. Our class and comp has identified the job description for that. So now we would have a series of growth positions in a management analyst series. But they, they really are extremely beneficial to an organization. And I apologize, I don't have a laundry list in front of me of the, of the things I'll work on, but I can, I can pull that up and elaborate if you would like.
Maybe I was misinterpreting or imagining, but one thing, I just want to make sure that, you know, we're not going to make this a priority in terms of the recruitment over the other vacant positions. We realize we've got key positions that we, we need to work on. I mean, I was just looking again through the development services report from Baker Tilly again, you know, they very clearly in there have a number of recommendations to prioritize getting the positions filled on the development services side. So I think that's going to continue to be our, our number one focus. So we would not move this one to the top of the list in terms of our recruitment efforts. So I'm not sure if that was helpful or not.
Because the, is this, is this position funded for the entire year?
Correct.
Okay.
Well, let me back up. I'm sorry, let me clarify, I didn't mean to interrupt you, mayor, but we actually took a bit of a different tack this year with our vacant positions. In the past, we've funded them 100% of the year and when we have significant salary savings. So we're trying to offset that a little bit this year. We've funded our vacancies at 50% because we know it takes time to, to hire positions and then other positions become vacant. So we think that'll firm up our salary savings a little bit.
So this is funded at 50%? Let's look at the budget.
For the time being, it depends on when we hire, we would still be able to hire the position.
Yeah, I'm just trying to make sure we're being consistent. Okay.
Yeah.
And I just have some problems with, or some concerns with getting management heavy, right? I mean, I, I understand the desire to have additional management people, but I've got 100 employees and I've got, what, four managers right now or three managers? I mean, that's sort of like, not quite, but every, every 25 employees got their own manager. I mean, that's still like having your own personal coach. So just, I'm just saying, just be careful. If you load it up too much, I'd rather have the people in the, in the trenches doing the work than having the manager sitting back and saying, you know, do what you should be doing. That's another story for another time.
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was going to try to elaborate. So management analysts aren't, when you hire them, they're not suddenly city manager leadership. They're, they, or other organizations, it could be called a budget analyst, it could be called a policy analyst, legislative analyst, but it's another analyst that digs in and they do project management, they do policy development, strategic planning, succession planning, legislative government affairs work. You do a lot of things and you develop the leadership skills over time, but they become that, that other person that can really dive into projects.
I'm not arguing that. I'm just looking at it and saying, in the long run, am I going to get a bigger kick from filling some of the positions we have that are open, been open for a while versus trying to come up with a new one? So it's just, it's just a, a, you know, thought. Back to the expenditure piece for the city manager, HR is included in there, right? That's the HR department.
In the management and administrative department, yes.
And I'm, I'm sure you guys are tired of hearing me harp on this topic, but filling these slots to me is the number one priority in the upcoming year. I don't get those, I mean, there's something in this staff report that also says, you know, it's not quite what we wanted it to be because we don't have the staff to do that. So I guess my question is, do we have a plan for going out and trying to improve this recruitment? Because there's no dollars allocated. I mean, are we, is it going to just come out with what we do? Do we have to spend any additional bucks to make that work? How does this, how do we accomplish that? That's, I'm, I'm just struggling to try and understand that.
Well, I think it's a number of the things I, I touched on. We're trying to streamline how we're doing operations in HR. We did set aside budget for all of those efforts. So we're changing our recruitment software. We're changing how we're doing, you know, great story. Michelle, our, Michelle Cook, our new HR manager flew out last minute to Minneapolis a couple of weeks ago to go to the American Planning Association conference at the job fair and do some recruitment there. We were able to get 35 plus potential employees sign up, interest in Malibu. And so we're doing everything we can to spread the word of Malibu and, and recruit as best we can, get our word out there. But we're doing all those things. We're changing our software, we did the class and comp, all these things. But that is the plan.
I understand all that.
Mayor, that is the plan.
We've talked about that. I mean, I agree, you know, we did the, we did the vacation for Christmas, we did the ice cream socials, we've done the comp plan. At some point in time, you gotta, we gotta put those things together and come up with a plan that's going to allow us to go out and start recruiting some of these folks. Because I mean, I don't argue with doing any of that stuff. I'm just saying, you've got to convert it into an action item that says we're going to get something done because otherwise, I mean, it's the same story. I've been, you know, I've been hearing it now, we did this. Okay, has that improved recruitment? I haven't seen that happen yet. So I'm just saying, it's something we got to think about. I don't know if we have to allocate additional funds. If there's a program that says, you know, we're going to come up with something and it's going to cost us some money to do that, whether we're going to go out and go to all the colleges to start recruiting people? I don't know. I don't know what you guys have got planned, but if we have to put some money to do that, I think that's a high priority. And if we got to have money allocated in the budget, we got to think about that. So whatever that's worth.
Well, Mr. Mayor, great thoughts and absolutely we agree. It's just top priority for us. You know, a big part of our plan was getting the HR department back fully staffed again. And now that we've got a, a fully staffed HR department, I fully suspect that we're going to be able to move through these recruitment, recruitments faster and start being able to get these positions filled much more rapidly than we have in the past, just because we were very limited in terms of, as Joe was saying, we basically had one person. So that was a, that was a top priority was, was getting the HR department up to speed, I mean, up to, up to, up to the capacity again. And so obviously from there, we're going to be able to get a lot more done to the HR side.
Okay, and one last comment, and I'm going to keep harping on this until we get those slots filled. To me, that is, at least when we finished our last study group there, that was number one. I mean, until we get them filled, all these tasks that we have sitting on the plate and the holding parking lot or however we want to call it, can't get to them, right? Because they don't have the staff to do that. But will there be a plan? You guys intend to come up with a plan that says, here are the efforts we're going to go through, do the recruiting? I just, am I whistling Dixie here and never going to see anything? I'm just trying to figure out what, what I can expect.
May? So I think, you know, we, we need to also recognize the landscape of who's out there to be recruited. You know, we're, we're looking for planning, but it's not just plug in any planner into those particular positions. There's a special skillset for being in Malibu and you want to make sure that you are actually recruiting people who can do the, the workload that we've got here. So they have been going out and doing recruiting, they've been advertising for those things. But you've also got to remember, we may not be getting the candidates necessarily to be able to fill those positions that are going to be a good fit for our city because of their experience and knowledge and the things that you have to do in Malibu is a very unique skillset. So I think we have to be careful and not just plug people in because we're trying to fill a spot. We want to make sure that they are going to work with the job requirements that we have because we want quality. You know, we're very concerned about making sure that we have accuracy in our planning process. And if we don't have the type of people that have the skillset to be able to do that, it's not going to benefit us at all.
Well, if I can't find the type of.
Mayor?
Yes.
If the council's going to get into discussion at this stage, you may want to take public comment, just see if anyone said anything to comment so far. We do have some members of the public on Zoom.
One, just one, you know, if we're looking for people that we can't, don't have, we can't find people with the skillset we need to do the job, we ought to go back, maybe rethink what we're looking for. But Bruce?
Yeah, I'm just listening to this conversation, I'm wondering, we're, we're not here for the purpose of discussing what's going to be done for recruitment, but what I'm hearing being asked perhaps, or if it wasn't being, it's spurred a thought on my head part is, do we have enough built into the budget for taking further steps for recruitment than what's been done in the past since it's a priority? Are we building in additional costs for taking extra measures to get more people? Potential bonuses, potential travel expenses if more trips are necessary to find people? It's one thing for it to simply be a line on the budget, on our action plan that says better recruitment and retention, by the way, it's not just recruitment. But are we actually building something into the budget that shows that this is a priority and that is going to be used for that priority?
Yes, council member Silverstein through the mayor. So this current year, we increased our recruitment budget. We've also been spending a fair amount in professional services, so some of that is interchangeable. But we've continued that funding into the next fiscal year. So there is funding, not necessarily for bonuses per se, but for any efforts that we come up with, anything we're looking at, there, there is funding there.
So the, the funding's not simply the salaries of the people that we hope to hire, it's the costs of obtaining them?
Correct. We have, we have enough to cover that as far as we can anticipate.
Okay.
How much is that?
I'd have to pull up the number. Off the top of my head, I think we had about 300,000 in recruitment and retention.
Okay.
There you go, 345.
Cool, very good. All right. Chelsea, do we have hands?
There's two hands. First is Ryan.
Ryan, you're on. Ryan, you out there?
Yes, okay. So I just got the unmuted.[1727.66]
Um, there were several things that I wanted to bring up, and that is that, um, there could be a large change in any of the categories that are kind of unanticipated, but one I was gonna ask, uh, for the staff to comment about is the joint powered insurance authority, um, allocation, um, for the, the city Malibu has to pay, along with the other contract cities and so forth, for not just the sheriff's, um, component, but, because there's like a settlement fund or something, you know, surcharge for the sheriffs, uh, based on the level of contracting that we do with the sheriffs. So, um, that could be a, a big change or wild card. Um, I wanted to, I hope the staff's taking quick notes, because I know I'm limited on time, but the grant consultant to go after money for the city. They usually bring in many times what they cost as a part-time consultant. Uh, the city operated very well with a part-time consultant in the past. And, um, I think that needs to be built into the budget. Um, I don't, I assume that Alexis Brown has already done this work before, she's probably written press releases before and so forth, so I don't know if there's overlap. Um, and if we have an assistant, another assistant in that department as proposed, um, for that position, uh, as an analyst, uh, maybe, maybe they do, uh, some of this stuff too, but, um, that would be very important for our city, especially in getting funding for what would need to become a hundred-foot, uh, span across the full ride of way of Pacific Coast Highway to mount all of these forward and backwards faking cameras, one for every lane as people enter the city on the eastern end. It can be disguised as something very beautiful, welcome to Malibu, but there's gonna need to be some hidden cameras in there for the enforcement of speeding and automated license plate recording. And getting a grant for that, a safety grant, is something we need to start penciling out right now and submitting. Um, I would like for the public safety programs, the contracts to be broken out separately, because I, they might be, I haven't seen that in the budget yet, but we now have the CHP expenses, there's the sheriff, and then there's sheriff's special programs. Right now, we have a beach team. Um, that beach team is for the benefit of the county, as we're finding from the speeding tickets and so forth, only 10% of the traffic, our PCH, is for Malibu residents. But maybe the CHP, if we, if they pay for 90% at the state level and we kick in 10%, maybe that's the right ratio.
Thanks, Ryan. Time's up. Who's next?
Joe Drummond.
Joe, you're on.
Oops, hi, can you hear me?
Got you.
Oh, sorry, I was just driving home from the art show and I stopped and I'm listening in the car, uh, and I'm stopped inside the road, don't worry. Um, I wanna just piggyback on what Ryan was saying about the beach team. I don't know if, um, we're still paying 100% for the county's beach team, and like Ryan was saying, only 10% of Malibu residents are on the roads and probably going to the beaches in the summer, so that, we either have to renegotiate what we get from the parking tickets, I think we only get 10% or something, and, um, we really should not be paying for the entire beach team police. We do need them, but we, we should not be paying for their entire thing. And also, I do think if some of the budget of, for the planning department can go towards finding a way to expedite small projects that they don't take, that, because large projects are taken within a year even faster than fire rebuilds. Somehow, some fire rebuilds are not getting the same amount of bathrooms that they had before, and I don't know, like, all these different things. So, I think some sort of a study or something to help alleviate residents who are having issues with their, either small projects or fire rebuilds that are like for like, and plus 10%, just, just should be a planning verification. So, I don't know why it doesn't, it takes them over a year and a half, two years, three years sometimes, but, um, large, multi, multi-complex structures are getting approved within a year. So, something needs to be allocated to help regular residents with their small projects. I hope something can be allocated there, but if you could do something with the beach teams, that would be great. Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Steve?
Ed, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna assure the council that, um, our staff, our development staff makes fire rebuilds an absolute top priority. Um, we have not been setting aside work to move other projects aside at the expense of any fire rebuild project.
Cool, thank you. Any other questions? Otherwise, move forward, Joe.
All right, uh, first up is our city clerk, well, second up, city clerk department.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'll try to keep this brief for you, um, but we don't have any divisions in the city clerk's office, but as you know, we are responsible for records management, elections, and supporting the city council, to describe it broadly. Our total budget is $747,000, all coming from the general fund, and our full-time equivalent positions are three and a half, including the request for a part-time deputy city clerk. For context for all of our accomplishments, this is the first fiscal year where we will have been fully staffed for the entire fiscal year since FY 2019, 2020. So, that has helped us a lot to be able to catch up on a lot of projects between being fully staffed and having the assistance of an experienced part-time retiree. We've been able to make progress on a lot of the backlogs we've had, including the backlog of city council meeting minutes. Happily, the last of that backlog will be presented at your next regular meeting and we'll be working from day forward. A few highlights I chose just to give you an idea of our workload, this isn't comprehensive, but public records requests, this fiscal year, we've had 580 requests, and so far, we've produced over 11,000 digital records. What's interesting with that is more than half of those requests and more than half of the records have been received and produced since January 1. This calendar year, we're here, we're seeing a significant increase in public records requests. When I compare calendar year to calendar year, we're at about 25% to 30% over in public records requests compared to 2023. There's not a clear trend, but it's having a significant impact on my staff and as well as our planning and building staff who deal with the bulk of the requests. So, I believe that's going to continue, we haven't seen a slacking off since January. And then you also know you've been very busy this year with 38 city council meetings scheduled. We've had 34 so far, four more for May and June, and 22 of those are regular meetings. Our number one goal this year is, of course, the November 5th, 2024 general municipal election for three city council seats. That kicks off at the beginning, at the end of this fiscal year, in June, we call the election, and then the nomination period will open next fiscal year in July, uh, July 15th is the opening of that nomination period. It dominates the first half of the fiscal year for our schedule. Uh, so focusing on that, but also continuing to respond to the increase in public records requests. And then with our staffing and having some support from a part-time deputy, we are going to be working on more of our backlog projects, including records management. Um, we are going to focus on digitizing some records that we haven't been able to get into the modern era yet, and also, it is time to bring an updated retention schedule to the council. The deputy city clerk would also assist with the planning commission backlog. So, it's a pretty quick, quick presentation for my department, uh, but we are focusing on the general municipal election. We have our requests for our part-time deputy city clerk to keep moving us forward, and we will have to keep up with our day-to-day operations for records management and public records requests on top of the election. I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Kelsey, any questions, comments? Mary Ann?
One, thank you for your department, and you guys are doing great work. Um, that half position is that, um, just forever into the future, or is it?
No, no, we're, we're planning that just for this fiscal year. We do still have a backlog, although we're fully staffed going into an election year. We don't have a lot of extra capacity, and we are trying to get us back to current so my staff can focus on moving us forward and being able to support the other departments with the projects they have going on, like record digitization efforts of their own and other issues we're working on.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I just wanna thank you for, I know that when you took over the job, you landed in a, in a very difficult position, and the fact that you've worked out of that backlog is amazing and we can't appreciate it enough. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your support.
Anybody else? Hey, Kelsey, thank you very much, you guys do a great job, thank you. Joe, you're on again.
All right, and we're gonna continue in the order that the departments are listed in the budget, so next up is the public safety department.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, here we go. Right, public safety department, which, as you know, is the largest in terms of budget. We have this year $16.6 million, 16.4, that is from general fund, and 175,000 is in special revenue. We're requesting, uh, 5.5 full-time employees, that's a, a one employee increase from last year, and in addition to that, we're also requesting an additional $650,000. Um, as you know, public safety, a lot of it is contract with the sheriff's contract. Uh, we also have homeless services contract, animal care and control contract, and we're looking to also a possible parking enforcement contract. And then the rest is all in-house public safety services with addressing homelessness, uh, doing wildfire mitigation and public education programs, and emergency planning and training, and of course, responding to various other public safety concerns in the community and supporting our sheriff's department. So, some accomplishments, uh, to kinda highlight all of this work, removed more than 500 hazard trees, conducted more than 60 wildfire assessments, 29 homeless encampments have been cleared, conducted 14 preparedness trainings for the community and for staff. We've updated the emergency operations plan, conducted a public safety expo for the community, implemented a new EOC software system to assess us, to assist us in managing disasters, installed the final 30 beacon boxes in our neighborhoods, established a contract with CHP, and did a homeless count, which showed, uh, another reduction this year of 30%. Some goals and objectives we've identified for the next year is to establish more firewise communities, establish the KBU antenna at Malibu Bluffs Park, install ALPR cameras, that's the license plate reader cameras. Pardon me. Increase parking enforcement, conduct more safety training, conduct neighborhood evacuation drill, and just as a note, we actually are waiting, hopefully, to receive a grant to help pay for that and get help to conduct it. Um, we also wanna conduct two tabletop exercises next year, hold another safety and preparedness fair, and remove another 250,000 more hazard trees.
250?
Yes, very busy. So, emerging issues that you're, I'm sure, very familiar with, the fire insurance issue, uh, with so many people losing their insurance or the insurance rate's going up so much, uh, that's what some of our, our fire safety hazard mitigation kind of activities is trying to support that with, uh, creating firewise communities and trying to become a fire risk reduction community, because these are things that the insurance commissioner has said can help people lower their insurance rate or potentially gain their insurance back. So, really focusing on that to address that problem. Uh, limited resources, as you know, our public safety agencies are really struggling with staffing, but also our animal care and control, uh, they also are struggling greatly with having staffing. Also, the Supreme Court, as I'm sure you've heard, is going to be deciding on a case that impacts homelessness. We're kinda hoping that it won't impact us too much, but we're watching that carefully because it, it could have an impact on us. In summary, our department includes in-house and contract public safety programs for a total of $6.6 million. Um, but with all the work we do, we increase community safety and we're reducing the impacts of homelessness in our community. And that's it, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Susan. Any questions, comments? Mary Ann?
I was just gonna compliment the department, you guys are doing great work and-
Thanks.
I hope the additional administrative person will help, uh-
It will help a lot.
Keep a lot of stuff going, so, thank you.
Joe?
Uh, I echo what Mary Ann said, and you're so much better prepared today than five and a half years ago. Uh, thank goodness. Um, a couple of quick questions. On the KBU antenna, is that gonna get up by fire season, and do you need anything else to make that thing work? Because I, I was looking at the Maui, um, summary, and information to the public was one of the critical shortfalls. And KBU is our, our only best option for that, and where do we stand?
Yeah, we are, the goal is to have it up and running by September. We're still in the permitting process right now, where we're kinda getting plans, because, you know, we have to get some, um, plans developed for the, the CDP, COP, um, and so we're in the middle of all that, but we're moving as quickly as we can.
Okay. Uh, and the ALPRs, are they gonna, do you have any idea when those are gonna get installed?
Well-
I only have three more years or two more years.
Yeah, I know, that's how I feel too. We've had them for, I don't, I don't even wanna think about how long we've had them. Um, but as you know, the, the idea of putting them on SE poles fell apart. Um, so we're down to having to install our own poles and having to get encroachment permits along PCH. So, our public safety liaison is working with Public Works right now to implement that strategy. I don't have a timeline right now of that, we're in the early stages of figuring out what it's gonna take to do that, but that's the plan right now.
Okay. Then the last item, uh, this is more of a line item on the budget. When you look at the beach patrol, which I know has gotten a lot of attention, when you look at the, um, 51, the slide item 5116, I think it is, um, the run rate has been 650, 750, uh, then you had an amended, uh, for a million three, but the actual estimate is back around 858. But you ever shown another million 275. What, that's a lot of money in the budget when we talk about a $500,000 surplus, yeah, which number is the right number?
You're talking about the beach team, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, what that is, is we budget for what they want to have deployed, but when it comes to hiring the staff to do it, last year, they really struggled, that's why we ended up with a cost savings there. We're hoping we can get people, they can't, they can only force people so much, as you know, there's a lot of overtime already being done, but, you know, there were some recent suicides, so they're trying to pull back and not allow people to do so much, you know, um, overtime. So, we're budgeting for best-case scenario, hoping we can get the coverage, but again, like last year, it's possible they won't be able to fill all the slots every week.
Yeah, because it looks like it was about a $300,000 delta on, on your normal one.
Yeah, last year there was, yes.
Okay, all right. Um, be interesting to see how that comes out. Thank you.
Anybody else, Paul? Bruce? No? Susan, thank you very much, you guys do a great job.
Thank you.
And real quick, Susan, before you take off, one thing I wanted to clarify, so part of the supplemental ask is for parking enforcement, uh, services, which could bring in, which would be offset with revenue and could bring in additional revenue as well.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Joe, back to you.
All right, next up is our community services department.
Good evening, honorable mayor and members of city councils, and I am pleased to present the community services department budget for this upcoming fiscal year. All right. Uh, the community services department provides recreational opportunities for residents of all ages and strives to provide clean and well-maintained parks and facilities at our seven parks, while focusing on, uh, native habitats and landscapes. As you can see in the slide, these are all the program areas the community services department covers, and, um, we are also liaisons to three commissions, including the Parks Recreation Commission, the Malibu Arts Commission, and Youth Commission. Commissioners provide staff with important insight regarding community needs and requests on programming and events. Uh, great customer service is also, uh, and positive interactions are also essential to our department's operations. In fiscal year 2425, the department requested a total budget of, uh, 5.8 million, which includes the operation of recreation programs, arts programs, special events, park maintenance, improvement projects, and staffing. Uh, costs associated with coordinating recreation programs and events and park maintenance is 4.6 million. Special revenue includes Prop A funding, which covers costs related to transportation for senior center dial ride program. Um, and we take excursion, excursions through that program, and we provide transportation at special events such as Schumash Day. This fall, um, the department will release an RFP for transportation service provider, allowing staff to review and revise the current scope of work to meet riders' expectations. The department structure currently includes full-time, 10 full-time staff employees. In fiscal year 2425, we are requesting the addition of one full-time position for our park maintenance division. The employee will focus on preventative maintenance and assist with general facility repairs, inspections, safety measures, and park cleanliness. The department's part-time employees work in all recreation areas covered in the budget, including the- including the Michael Landon Center and the Malibu Community Pool, which is staffed seven days a week. This year's budget request include approximately $100,000 related to salaries for the additional employee and $70,000 for costs related to special events. However, the overall budget across the entire department is reduced by $270,000 due to one-time costs of equipment expenses such as the pool office trailer. This year, some of our accomplishments include, we provided over 450 recreation programs for our community, processed over 200 facility rental requests, and did some Malibu improvements at Malibu Bluffs Park, including we have a card access control system now at the Michael Landon Center, similar to City Hall. We installed new dugout benches in our baseball fields, and we're currently under walkway repairs. Six exhibitions were conducted at the Malibu City Gallery, and the art openings included music and question and answer sessions, and we'll continue to work with our Arts Commission to conduct those programs next fiscal year. Nathan Hassel is our poet laureate, he's done an amazing job at expanding programs and events for our literary community, and he's nearly tripled attendance at our monthly poetry For Legacy Park, our staff continue to do handweeding in the rehabilitated park areas. This fiscal year, we've installed over 460 native plants. Additionally, we've offered educational programs in partnership with the Malibu Library and incorporated the app-based program Agents of Discovery. We have added some park safety measures, specifically at Malibu Bluffs Park. We've included, we've added vehicle curb stops at the Ocean Friendly Garden and installed an aerostincell at the park entrance to go left or right. This year, we also plan to install some emergency call boxes at Trunkus Canyon Park and Charmery Wilderness Park, and those will be installed by June. The permanent skate park, this was a big one for us. We know that this is a council priority, and we are working towards finalizing the construction documents for building and safety, and then begin the construction bid process with the Public Works Department. And finally, we should be fully staffed by June. I have one position open currently, and we're conducting second interviews, so we're excited to be, to be a fully staffed team. Some goals and objectives for next fiscal year, of course, our top priority continues to be the permanent skate park. As I mentioned, we're moving forward to finalizing construction and hopefully breaking ground in next fiscal year. The Malibu Snack Shack is a capital improvement project for this year, and the department will work closely with youth leagues to complete community outreach and an understanding to add the community's goals and objectives to the permanent facility. Charmley Wilderness Park Nature Center does require a lot of refurbishment and upgrades, and our plan is to reopen that facility soon and just provide, continue to provide educational opportunities that focus on native habitats, conservation, biodiversity, and including Malibu's history. Due to increasing requests for facility use, the department will bring forth updated facility use policies, and we hope that this will assist staff with designating spaces, city-owned parks, for youth sports leagues, private rentals, and of course, our own city rec The earth-friendly management education, we work with a group of advocates here in our community to review earth-friendly management policies, so we'll continue to work with them next fiscal year and incorporate some outreach in our parks and Malibu, I'm sorry, the Mayor's Monarch pledge is also part of that earth-friendly management education. We'll continue to find ways to expand arts programs and events while working with our Malibu Arts Commission, and in 2025, we're really excited to celebrate the 25th anniversary of Chumash Day. We plan to work with our Native American advisors to do special recognitions at the events and performances, and as part of that, we plan to hold educational workshop, arts events, lectures, and special programs focusing on the importance of the Chumash people. Our preventative maintenance calendar, this is something that's been on our list for a really long time. We just want to make sure we have a calendar in place to keep our equipment and parks operating efficiently and to prevent those long-term costs that sometimes come up. The department will continue to find ways to implement digital systems and expedite processes such as budget tracking, digital newsletters, and communication. And finally, we are planning employee training and career development specifically for our part-time employees. They have asked for that this year, and so we're already in works of working with Pepperdine University and then working with our professional societies and institutions to provide that training to our staff. In summary, our budget is comparable to last fiscal year, and as I mentioned throughout the presentation, we'll continue to focus on facility and park improvements and work on expanding recreation and arts opportunities. Landscape initiatives, environmental education at Legacy Park specifically, we'll continue to expand our Agents of Discovery program, offering it to older-age children in the teen years, and we're looking to develop a docent program as well. And this, just streamlining processes is always a goal for us, just both internally and for the public, to make it easier for, for facility rentals, for program registration, or advice on what we need to offer for our residents as far as rec programs. That concludes my presentation, happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you very much. Bruce?
Yeah, two things. Cypher, thank you for the presentation. You mentioned that the full-time skate park is the top priority, and I know it's a major priority, but I thought we had elevated the Snack Shack to like super, super top priority to get that done as quickly as possible. Where does it stand?
It is in our CIP project list for the upcoming fiscal year. We have had meetings with our Parks and Recreation Commission to talk to them about what they want to see as far as what that facility looks like, so restrooms they want, storage areas they want, and of course, the Snack Shack. So we'll work with our Public Works Department to potentially hire an engineer to give us options of kind of what that looks like in the future.
We have an adequate amount built into the budget for that?
I believe so.
Okay. The other thing is facility use. When we had our ANF meeting, I think it was discovered that we actually are not bound by the same, we can only recover our costs regime as we are for permits, so I want to ask you to give consideration for the future of where the profit opportunities might be for facilities use. Not necessarily with respect to local residents who want to use community centers for local matters, but we had, for example, we had a jazz concert here, which there were some other problems with, but we could have, could have made that into a profit-making opportunity rather than simply renting out the space at some nominal amount, so I'd like to look into that in the future.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Bruce. Anybody else? Mary Ann?
Of course I have something. Thank you, the Community Services is great, you guys are the heart and soul of the community and where we get to do all the fun and everything else, so I appreciate all the hard work there. You mentioned having call boxes or something at the different parks. Do we have Wi-Fi at the parks? Are people able to do that? What's the...
At Malibu Bluffs Park, we have Wi-Fi available to the public. These call boxes, we are working with T-Mobile to, so it'll be a cellular service call box and a solar panel call box, so we won't have any like hardwires into our facility. So I know we've investigated Wi-Fi at city parks, it's a long process, but that hasn't dropped off our, our list internally.
Okay. I mean, I think, you know, as somebody who's been to the parks and have tried to do a variety of things, either, you know, just texting or calling or anything, so if we can build that into information services along with community services, I think that'd be a valuable thing for our residents.
We're also, sorry to interrupt, Starlink is, has found out to be an excellent resource. We're looking at installing that at the pool office and potentially at Malibu Bluffs Park as kind of like a backup, so I think that's a, that's a good option, we just need to do a little bit more research.
Yeah, I spent the last two days up at the Boys and Girls Club, and needless to say, there's no service up there at all, so yeah, having anything that would be, be helpful, and if Starlink is something, then that'd be great if we could explore that.
Anybody else, Paul?
Just wanted you to know how much we love what you do, and I will be at the next starts opening as well.
Anybody else? Bruce?
Actually, just to follow up on the Wi-Fi issue, I heard a report on the radio about the fact that actually it's, it's an initiative for the state to get free Wi-Fi throughout the state as a goal, and there may be funding available, so we should look into that.
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to note that we will be coming back a little bit later when we talk about the capital improvement budget for this year, and we'll touch a little bit more on the permanent skate park at that point.
Very good. Chris, thank you, you left off all the speaker series stuff you guys do, which is also excellent, so you know, you're doing good, thank you very much. Joe, back to you.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Our next department is Environmental Sustainability.
Good evening, City Council, I will present the proposed fiscal year for the Environmental Sustainability Department. As you know, our Environmental Sustainability Department is comprised of four major divisions: Building and Safety, that includes building permits, counter-management, building plan check, building inspection, grading plan check, grading inspections, in addition to geotechnical and coastal engineering. We also oversee the wastewater management, which is your environmental health. We oversee the wastewater treatment systems, the operating permits that go along with this. Another division is the Clean Water, that aims to protect the water quality of our local creeks, streams, and oceans by implementing our regulations. We also have our Solid Waste, that implements our city's recycling and hauling policies. Currently, the city has 14 environmental programs that we oversee. Just an overview of our budget for this fiscal year, we are requesting a $9.0 million request for budget. Out of the general fund, funding will be $8.8 million. We have a special revenue funding of $221,000. The department is comprised of 21.5 full-time employees, but currently we only have 17. We have four vacancies. We are requesting a $500,000, $560,000, $60,000, $500,000 for the exterior elevated element programs compliance. We are anticipating and projecting that we will receive more than 800 assessments, structural assessment for the elevated elements, so we are hoping to have a consulting firm that will assist us with the review, the inspections, and the verifying of the reports that we will be receiving. Our accomplishments, I think one of the biggest honors that is bestowed on any city building department is the recent Calvo California State Building Department of the Year. The city of Malibu is now, can be counted as the one of the selected groups in the whole state of California, as one of the jurisdictions that has achieved this outstanding accomplishment. The following is our Development Portal. Development Portal is a joint effort between departments, and it took five months. This is a wonderful tool that will provide the applicants and the city staff to be more streamlined, and we can be more effective at doing our job. As our city manager, McClary, stated, our top priority continues to be Woolsey Fire. It's been five and a half years, and the current numbers that are, as of today, do not reflect on the PowerPoint, we have 160 certificate of occupancies that have been issued, this meaning 160 families are back home. We have 127 homes under construction and 42 under plan check review. We are expecting to see another 43 homes that are currently under planning. So far, we have done about 17,000 inspections since 2019 just on Woolsey Fire. Under our normal operations, we continue to be very busy. Our regular inspections are topping closer to the 10,000 for this year, and we haven't even final this year. We have, receive 1,480 plan check reviews, and we have issued close to 2,000 permits. We continue doing efforts on our environmental programs and clean water. We have conducted 335 clean water and 116 clean bay inspections. Emergency response was one critical for this past year. The substantial winter rains in 2013 created about 60 parcels that are, have a landslide or a coastal erosion going on. Working together again with the planning department, we were able to develop an emergency slope repair checklist to help mitigate and to help respond to these critical issues right away. We were able to work with geology, Public Works, planning, and building and safety. Our coastal vulnerability phase one was also a success. We had two different workshops this past year. And our dark skies, finally, we had, we had as of today, five gas stations that are fully on compliance. We're working on our last gas station to make it in compliance, and we're hoping that could be accomplished within the next two weeks. Our goals and objectives, again, still one of the top priorities, we haven't forgot about the Woolsey Fire. We have 80 plan checks that will be coming, and we are going to be busy reviewing. We also have about 94 parcels that have not come to the city. This constitute a 20% of the total fire rebuild that needs to be addressed. Exterior elevated elements will be one of the biggest tasks that our department will need to face this, this fiscal year, with more than 800 expected assessment to be coming, and also possibly plan check for possibly balcony repairs. The implementation of a solar app, this is a state requirement that will streamline our photovoltaic review. In addition, of the full implementation of Blue Beam, and to continue refining our Development Portal, that will take significant time, significant amount of time. We will continue maintaining an, our 10-day turnaround time to plan check, and our goal also is to finalize the geotechnical guidelines to be presented to you, Council. More goals and objectives for the environmental portion of it, coastal vulnerability assessment, the completion will be for phase two. We already have conducted the second workshop in person last week, and this, next week, we'll be hosting a virtual workshop to obtain feedback from the community regarding what are the next steps. So with this, with this, a public survey will be, get back to the community to get feedback on the next steps, and this will be incorporated on the final draft, the final document that will be then presented to Council. With the extreme weathers and storms that we had last year, we feel that shoreline protection is one of the most critical that we also need to keep an eye on. We currently have requirements, our... We currently have requirements are recorded for covenants for this type of monitoring of this shoreline systems. The intent for this year is to provide a most focus into the maintenance of the seawalls and report back to Council. Dark Sky is also our next steps, commercial and institutional, with the goal of continue working with the planning department, hiring an expert on dark skies policy and a hands-on contract service company that can help us, can help us with the compliance with the commercial and institution buildings. Organic recycling tier two, we will also continue focusing on this. And our Clean Power Alliance, which is critical for our continued sustainability efforts. So what do you see as an emerging issues for us is continue to monitor those 60 parcels with landslide and coastal erosions. The next step will be continue mitigating and working on the remediation work along with planning department. Continue finding those four professionals that are going to be part of our team and not forgetting about our turnaround time and streamlined process. In summary, this has been a great year. We are blessed to continue working hard for the community and to serve them in any possible way. We will continue following the council goals and strategy and strategic plan. Our focus will be to strengthen the team, providing them the mentorship to, to strengthen them and continue to enforce our local and federal regulations and to keep our city under compliance. That concludes my presentation and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. Your lines of questions, comments? Anybody? Mary Ann?
How do you say congratulations any bigger than, you know, full applause?
It's just a, it's just a blessing. We were videotaping the state of the city today and as we were doing that, I received a live update that we won and it's a team effort and this signifies so much more because it's the whole team, it gets recognized. So just humbling and having Malibu at the top of, of every jurisdiction in the state of California is such a great honor to have and to, and to have for the community.
I hope you had Parker rewind and do it over again. Thanks, thank you very much for everything you guys are doing.
Bruce?
Yeah, I'll just add, you know, you did that short-staffed and I just quickly looked on the internet after I heard about that. I mean, other cities that have received that award in the past are San Diego, Los Angeles, Sacramento. I mean, that's, it's very impressive to be up there with those cities with huge staffs and huge budgets.
Huge budget, who's there, a lot of staffing and you have a mighty team and you have a set of professionals that dedicate their life and passion to serve Malibu and that's what I'm more proud to be recognized on this award.
And they have a leader that obviously cares.
Thank you.
Mary Ann?
I just want to say congratulations and since I know firsthand, you know, what a great department it is, I can't be more proud than all my coworkers that I formerly worked with. Yeah, you guys definitely earned this and you deserve all the recognition that you get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else, Paul?
Just one more person saying the same thing. It's, it's been wonderful and you've, you've always been emotionally wonderful and people respond to it and we can't thank you enough.
It's my honor. Thank you.
Very good, Jolanda. Thank you. I just wondered, did you know it was coming? Because it was the first thing on your slide when you did that.
As soon as I saw that we won, I sent our assistant city manager, Tony, may I please put this on my slides?
Deserve everything. All the, all the applause. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, sir.
Joe, back to you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Our next department is the planning department.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. I wanted to start off my presentation by thanking my staff for the incredible work this year. Though we've been understaffed, we've instituted a number of internal changes this year and we've been able to accomplish so much, including the processing of a record amount of planning applications, which surpassed the expectations published on our website and also meeting our goals for this year. Each person's contribution has made a very large impact to the department and I'm really proud to be their director. It's projected that this year we're going to be receiving approximately 1,070 applications. This is an increase of 18% compared to last year. This is the greatest amount of applications received in the past 20 years and the same is true for decisions issued by the planning department. It's projected that we're going to be issuing 936 decisions this year, which is a 25% increase over the past year. And it's also a very good accomplishment for the department because typically we don't come near a one-for-one on intake and decision-making and those decisions would be relating from large projects to small projects or miscellaneous applications, whether approvals or disapprovals. Part of the planning department also includes the code enforcement division. The code enforcement division, so you know, provides enforcement for not only the planning department, but all other city departments. Our code enforcement staff is responsible for the implementation and enforcement for follow-up on TOT violations, locking lid violations, dark skies compliance, public works, encroachment permit violations and operating permit violations and violations to the city's environmental programs. Our code enforcement division, so that you're aware, work not only Monday through Friday, but during June to October, we typically staff two weekend days per month. In addition, the code enforcement division is also responsible for the implementation of the city's short-term rental program. To date, we've received 283 applications and we've processed 247. We are continuing to keep this year's budget flat from last year with no additional requests. The planning department is currently budgeted for 29 positions. We have 8.5 vacancies and the point five is an intern shot, a spot that we have. 6.5 of those 8.5 positions are planners. We currently have two administrative assistant positions that are open and we hope to fill those within the upcoming month. We've completed interviews and we are expecting to make job offers shortly. But we do have vacancies in our planning technician position, assistant planner position, associate planner and planning intern. And we've also, so that the council's aware, I know I presented to you a plan to grow the department over a four-year period. However, given the vast number of vacancies, we've put that plan on hold. This year, we're on track to complete all of the goals for 23, 24 that I presented to the council last year at this time. The last item from that previous presentation to present to you is going to be the TUP ordinance and that's drafted and planned for your May hearing schedule. I'm happy to announce that one of our biggest accomplishments is that during the past year, we hired six new staff members. We've been conducting in-depth staff trainings. This is a bit different. I'll go more into that in a bit later when we discuss trainings. And depending on staff's, the staff members' work duties, one of the biggest things that we've been able to offer folks, which has helped with our retention and recruitment, is once the probation area is completed successfully, staff really value the, at least giving them one day to work remote. But once again, that depends on the duties and also the level. Obviously, folks that are assigned for the counter need to be here in person. We don't set up virtual counters at folks' homes. In addition, we've implemented some new procedures which involve the monthly review of each planner's workload to ensure the projects are being reviewed within the city's practice of 30 days. And despite the increased project submittals we've seen this year, we've actually been able to reduce the caseload per planner from what I presented to you last year was around 55 cases on average down to 40. It's not much of a reduction, but it's a movement in the right direction. We're also hoping that this lower number continues to give us the ability to produce, have better customer service. With respect to Woolsey Fire rebuilds, I'm happy to report to you that of the 465 homes destroyed, the planning department has been able to issue decisions on 360 of those, which has exceeded our expectations of the amount that have come in. And at this time, we currently have 12 applications to process. Nevertheless, there's no intention to roll back on our fire rebuild staffing or the availability of the fire rebuild planner to be in person by our front counter in the mornings. Another area where we've made some big progress this year has been the city's housing element. As you're aware, the city's previous consultant severed ties with the city and left us without a response to comments provided to the city by HCD. We've assembled a new team of consultants and have managed to get the city back on track and we are actively working with HCD on an expedited review timeline to work ourselves towards certification. Another major milestone, as mentioned by ESD, is the joint development portal and other improvements. What I can tell you is that in the past three business days, we've received over 100 submittal requests through the portal. Applicants are actively uploading records to the portal and they are using it. We are pleased to announce that the planning department has made other improvements such as overall response times. We've implemented nine metrics and we are meeting four. The other five have demonstrated some needs than training for applicants, provide better materials to them so that we can obtain better quality applications. And this is true for both small and large applications. The metrics, as you know, were implemented in August of 2023. Metric one was for staff to respond within 30 days and we had a target of 75%. To date, we are at 78%. For metric two, the goal was to respond within 30 days of a second submittal. The target was 50. We're at 100%. We are offer, another change that we've done is for, at the counter, we are offering in-person expedited review for solar battery systems, those would be tied in with the solar permits, generators and minor tenant improvements. We do that at our counter Monday through Friday and many of these receive same-day approval. I'd like to thank Patricia Salazar, our new development and operations manager, for a lot of these efforts. This was a newly created position in the budget and she's become the department's omnibusman for all things related to planning projects. The last one on this was another biggie for the department, which was the Malibu High School project. I'll admit, as a former graduate, I'm kind of sad to see the old campus go. I liked it. It was a fun place, but understand times change. And despite the complexity of this project, it required interaction with local and other, and state agencies, we were able to process the CDP from start to finish within six months. The LCPA was also a part of that for the specific plan and we were able to get that processed within about eight, excuse me, about six to seven months here up to the coastal commission and it was certified this past September. And so that was another big accomplishment for the department. As you're well aware, we received the skate park application in January of 23 and in November of 23, we were able to get the CDP before the city council, the planning commission, I'm sorry. That was another big accomplishment, as well as the city's ADU ordinance. This, the ADU ordinance was an important accomplishment for the city because we rely on some of that ordinance to help us with the certification of our housing element. Currently, the ADU ordinance is with the California Coastal Commission. We've received a request for additional information and we are working on that. In addition, we've spent a great amount of our time focused on implementation of the dark sky ordinance. Any new development applications, we are, it's not been simple, but we've, with the help of ESD and with the help of other experts in the field, we've been looking to see what we should be looking for during the plan review phase. In some cases, folks give us applications saying no lighting is proposed. Nevertheless, the building code requires lighting. For example, if there's an exit that has a step, there needs to be a light there. So we're trying to catch that in the planning stages and put the appropriate conditions on the project. So that is something big that we're doing. We did review the Malibu Jewish Center lighting plan, got that one approved as well as La Paz. And we also had code enforcement team up with one of our planners to start targeting shopping centers, to send them letters, to get them in, to submit lighting plans for our review. We're also working with the, the ESD department so that we have some upcoming code amendments to the dark skies ordinance and we'll be teaming up to work on those. Another large project this past year has been the temporary use permit ordinance. We have presented that to the planning commission, taken their recommendations, drafted a new report and as I mentioned, we plan to get that to you. And ideally, we'll have that completed by end of this year too. But I'm happy to say that that is something we got through ZO races and we were able to get it in front of the planning commission for their comments. And lastly, as part of the city's mission and vision statement, we've used that to go forward with the pesticide policy. We have the pesticide policy in place. We've given that to our code enforcement staff so that they can work with shopping center owners. We have received complaints about bait boxes and we do send staff out on those complaints. In addition, staff continues to include as a condition of approval on CDP applications, a language that prohibits the use of pesticides, herbicides and insecticides on projects. And you're seeing that in the resolutions that we bring forward. Our goals and objectives this upcoming year. We wish to continue to make, continued improvements to the review process. We want to look for ways to make the review process a bit more streamlined and open. For example, we've received some comments from Malibu Safe Tech requesting better access to knowledge of when an application is submitted, so not waiting until the required public noticing time, but finding some way that our system, now that we're moving into a more digital age, can notify them as an interested party the minute an application is submitted. That's important because of the shot clock, there's not a lot of time with these. And also, since all of this information is public record, they'd like to have a more simpler way for them to, on their own, be able to look at this information. So one of the things we're doing is making Patricia, our development and operations manager, available to them to look at ways that through all our digital processes, we can help better inform them so that they can review applications and submit comments. So those are the kind of changes we're looking to do and continue to move forward. Another, you know, big goal for this department is recruitment of senior-level staff. It's very easy to recruit newbies. That is not an issue. You get someone who's green, you can train them, but that takes a lot of time. Not that we're against it. Some of our best planners have come here that way, but we'd like to try to get more senior-level staff. That's where we, as I mentioned, we have some vacancies earlier. But we, while we do receive a good number of applications, there are not many that are qualified sometimes. And I think this is important to say, I wonder if I have too high of standards, but in the last round, I did have other folks look at the applications, our HR department look at the applications and unfortunately, they came to the same conclusion as me, that there was only one person that was qualified to sit for the interview. We did end up actually hiring that person, but the goal is to try to bring in more senior-level staff. Another change this year is going to be how we do our training. Typically, we've done a lot of training, just say, here's what our codes are. But similar to what we gave to you earlier this week with the Formula Retail presentation where we went into the history, we're going to be doing that with our training. We're pulling the, the staff reports that created the amendments before they went to council and we're sharing that information with our staff and our training is becoming a lot more in-depth, but it's containing that historical knowledge so that the staff have the benefit of understanding where this came from. You have to remember that in the last four years, we had a major loss of the brain power of the department. The majority of our staff is new. We have staff that come from all over California. Unfortunately, none of them that we've been able to hire, we've got some folks in the new pool that I'll be looking at interviews, they're not locals. And so we are trying to give them that historical background setting so that they understand why we became a city, why we have some of the codes and also some of the things that have flopped over the years. And then the last big goal there, as you see, is gaining certification for the city's general plan housing element and also working in conjunction with our safety department. We want to also update the safety element. That's something that was started, but unfortunately, that same consultant abandoned us on that. So we're going to be picking that up and we're going to be working with Susan on that and seeing if we can make some progress during the upcoming year. and seeing if we can make some progress during the upcoming year. The challenges that we're faced, as mentioned, staff recruitment. We want to shift from the long-term use of contract planners, like we've been using a lot of them the past couple of years. We really want to get back to our balance of just a couple of contract planners for advanced planning projects and really have in-house staff. I think we can all agree that having people in the building available to the public is an important thing. And we're going to continue to do this. As I mentioned, we were able to get six new hires last year. We'll continue and work on that this year. Case load. Case load is not only just to make the planner's life a little bit better here and more attractive, but it's also for the public. If we can get the caseload down, that means that we're going to have better response times, better availability. The, what I expect out of that, too, is that we do get a large number of requests for meetings from both sides of the table, from both the applicants or people concerned. This would give us more time for that and be able to have a bit more of a catered approach. What we've discovered in calling around to other cities as well as watching people's performance, as we've mentioned, twenty to twenty-five cases per planner is really ideal, and we'll continue to work towards that. Another challenge for the department and the city as a whole is that there are a number of assembly bills that have been adopted and continue to be presented that challenge local control over land use issues. Previously, the Coastal Act shielded the city, but that's changing. There are some assembly bills that are coming with respect to housing-related items where they are trying to remove some of the protections we had under. And I use the word protection, but it's because typically that's a state law. These laws typically focused on local laws, but now they are incorporating some language to address the Coastal Act. In summary, I'd like to once again really thank the department because I have pushed people hard this year. If anybody's been around City Hall after hours, you'll notice that there are a lot of planning cars in the parking lot past five-thirty and sometimes past seven o'clock. So I really want to thank the folks because it's because of them we've been able to meet our goals, put in some pretty drastic development review process changes. And also, as I mentioned, we've got our new development portal. We're going to continue to focus on that because that's really addressing a lot of the concerns raised by the public. I mentioned to you as a counsel earlier this week, one of the items was people were literally blindly submitting items. They were emailing us large files, and there was really no way to know that they were doing that. So we didn't know, and they also didn't get some sort of automated response back that it was received. And you know, that's a big thing because people were basically shooting off stuff in the dark, and we've addressed that. We'll continue to address that. And then also staff training. Staff training is important for the growth of the staff. I like to call that the internal customer service, and then also for the external customer service. Our goal is, you know, we are a public department. We interact with the public, like as I mentioned, they're on both sides of the table. We have both the applicants and we also have the concerned parties. We have to serve them all. And better trained staff is what's needed to do that. Folks that are knowledgeable really do make the public feel a bit more at ease and pleased when they leave our department. We don't necessarily give somebody what they want all the time, but it's important we treat them with respect and provide knowledgeable answers. And with that, I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Questions, comments?
Richard, I just wanted to comment how much I appreciate the fact that you're doing the historical training for people. I think that's going to be very helpful because an awful lot of our stuff is very hard to understand if you don't know why it was done. So thank you.
My pleasure.
Any else?
Joe? Richard, you're making progress. Number of cases per planner, I think, is a great indication of the change that's made. Like a year ago, you were, I think you said fifty-seven or sixty. And it's a death spiral with that number of cases. So good to see that happen. You're also doing what we talked about in the strategic planning meeting. And I talked about even when I was running for council, and that is the Malibu University. And I don't know which college you're running there, but your professors seem to be working well for that. I do have a question to Joe, though, and maybe Richard. I'm looking at your budget numbers here, and I realize you probably have, and I just want to clarify this, you've got full-time and part-time salaries up in your proposed budget, and you also have professional services. Is this a placeholder that if you get the employees hired, you've got a budget for them on the salary line as well as a contingency for contract planners? What I'm looking for is, do we have a double counting here? That as I look at the historic numbers, you look at the twenty-three, twenty-four versus the proposed, you've got a four-point-three-million-dollar actual run rate, and that's with the contract planners, but you've got five-point-four million in your budget. It's about a million plus, and if it's true, I'm just trying to see if we actually have more of a potential surplus than the half a million dollars on the general fund. So just a question. This goes to your, this goes to the College of Business Administration there.
Mayor Protemster, you're referring to the department budget page, page one oh six, is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct. So we did put a little bit of, this is what we're referring to, the Community Development Department. We did put a little bit of money there aside in case we go that route. We want to come back in future iterations of the budget and discuss that in more detail. But there is some cushion in there in that budget in case we build that out.
Yeah, and I fully understand you might want to have the ability to flip and flop line items to accommodate staff hirings or my kind of, hopefully, staff hirings. Because when they find out about the football team that you guys have for Planning University, I'm sure they'll be here for it. All right. Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Mary Ann?
I just want to compliment you and highlight, you know, what you said that you guys are doing an almost one-to-one turnaround on applications versus decisions. And that is all at a time when you're seeing an increase in applications. So even though you're short-staffed, it seems like the plans that are being implemented are starting to show things. And the highlight that you're also able to reduce the caseload on each planner is really great. And I think that'll absolutely help with any of the concerns that people have had in the past with the department. And congratulations on the big movie things. I was at the school today, and they're framing in, and Paul and I, and we're at the topping ceremony. So the new high school's coming along, and it's because of the staff here that that's been the success that it has been. So thank you.
And what else?
Richard, again, you're making progress. Thank you very much, but I think that's a very good move. I have one question. At one point in time, we were talking about having a code enforcement person permanently on weekends. Has that disappeared? Have we abandoned that idea or?
Certainly. It is not dead. The reason behind it is that we unfortunately have experienced a lot of turnover in code enforcement. I passed the one-year anniversary on two of my guys. And so the reason why my code enforcement manager requested that we put the brakes on that for a bit was because of the greenness of the staff. So for example, Doug, as you know, Doug Clevinger, he is pretty much, he's not working on the weekends technically, but he's on the phone almost all day with his guys, making sure that they're doing the right thing and keeping busy and we're, you know, being effective. So it's a matter of training. Like I said, it's not dead. It's I'm waiting for my code enforcement manager to tell me that the guys can truly function on their own. And that way, we don't have a supervision issue.
Cool. Good. I mean, I just, sometimes on weekends, Malibu turns into the Dodge City. So some enforcement would be helpful. Thank you very much. Doug? Yeah, just to quick comment on that, I think when we look at the short-term rental ordinance, when that comes back, we actually finalize it. I know I'm going to be pushing for enforcement. I know the successful cities in Palm Springs and the San Bernardino Mountain area and some of the other places, code enforcement for short-term rentals is how you make sure that it really is a neighborly, friendly operation. So weekends are going to be critical for that. So I'm glad to see the progress.
With that, Richard, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Joseph, back to you.
Thank you, Mayor. And our next department is Public Works.
So good evening, Mayor and Council. I guess they save the best for last? So just real quick, I'm going to, short, make it short. Okay, no. So real quick, just give a kind of a brief update on the Public Works Department and kind of the things that we do. This upcoming year, we'll be continuing to do in our street maintenance like we always do. We actually do our fleet operation and maintenance. We maintain the city's fleets. We make sure that they're running properly. We actually operate and maintain our landslide maintenance districts. We also operate our stormwater treatment facilities. Those treatment facilities actually capture, treat and disinfect stormwater before it goes out in the ocean. We also operate our new Civic Center water treatment facility that treats all the wastewater in the Civic Center area. And lastly, we perform Public Works engineering services. And what that is, is we have a, we have four really talented engineers that work for us that manage and juggle between managing capital projects, doing those engineering and managing those construction projects, and actually reviewing land development projects when they come in. So all four of those engineers do an amazing job doing it, and I'm very lucky to have those staff do that. Our budget this year is eight-point-three million. We have a general fund of six-point-nine million, and we have a general, special revenue coming in at three-point-six million. Currently, we have twelve full-time employees. We have two vacancies right now that we're working on trying to fill. One is an assistant Public Works Director, and the other one is an engineering technician position. We've had interviews with, for these positions, and we haven't quite found the right fit. So we're hoping this stuff's coming here. We can get those two positions filled. But yeah, we're working hard, trying to make sure we have the right fit for that. This year, we're asking a request of a hundred and seventy-five thousand. That's for three new vehicles for our fleet. Some of the accomplishments we had this year, we completed six capital projects. I also want to highlight one project that we've been working on for the last seven-plus years getting out, and that's our PCH Signal Synchronization Project that is in construction. And we're very happy that that one is moving along, going through. That's going to have a major impact on PCH for traffic safety and operation. Our four engineers, they completed eight-hundred-and-seventy-five development reviews. Our staff also issued three-hundred-and-fifteen encroachment permits. And if those who are unfamiliar with the encroachment permits, those are permits to allow the public to actually use a portion of the public right-of-way for various activities or putting in their new driveway approach or putting in a mailbox or temporarily using the right-of-way for construction. We also continue to respond twenty-four hours a day or twenty-four hour, what do I? Yeah, twelve hours. Twenty-four, seven. My gosh.
Joe? Twenty-five hours?
Twenty-five, twenty-seven. Anyway, so our crews work overtime, trying to make sure our streets and highways are clean and storm is a response. That's our number one priority for that, and they did a really good job this upcoming two years. We've had a really big storm events the last two years, and I'm happy on everything they've done. Lastly, we've treated twenty-four million gallons of wastewater this last year. And a lot of that's used at our irrigation for our parks. And with the inclusion of Phase Two, which I'll mention later on, hopefully, we'll expand that to other property owners to use the recycled water for the irrigation. Some of the goals for this upcoming year is, number one, is definitely improve safety along PCH. We have a number of capital projects that we're working on that will achieve that goal. Like I mentioned, the first one is PCH Signal Sync. We have four of the projects that we're working in development. One of them particularly that I'm really interested in seeing forward is the redesign of Los Flores and Rambla Pacifico intersection at PCH. Those with the conjunction of working with Caltrans and really looking to make PCH a safer environment for everybody is one of our top priorities. The other objective and goal that we want to do this year is develop a green fleet plan. And what that is, is that kind of give us a plan or a roadmap on how we can implement greener vehicles to our fleet, adding in electrical vehicles in there and having the right charging system and what vehicles really kind of fit within that pattern to really maximize and utilize it and have a sustainable system. The next goal is our Civic Center Water Treatment Facility Phase Two project. I think I mentioned probably three or four months ago that we were successful in changing the map for Phase Two and removing Sarah Retreat Neighborhood out of Phase Two. And we are working closely with the Regional Board to finalize some of these nuances for that project. I'll be happy to kind of give an update to council, probably within the next month or two on where we are. Some really good things kind of came out of that. And so I'm looking forward to kind of giving a really lengthy update on that. Another goal that we're going to be doing is we're going to be enhancing our GIS system. This GIS mapping system really helps our engineers and actually the city identifying various things within the city, parcels, storm drains, signals, signs, a number of things that we're going to try to add to our GIS system to make it more robust, not only for the Public Works Department, for the whole city, to see all those assets and all those different layers we can add. And lastly, we're going to continue to do our best to be out there twenty-five, twenty-thirty, what is it again, Joe? What is that? Twenty-four? No, continue to work tirelessly during storms, monitoring these storms, making sure that we're out there and making it safer for the community during these storms. And in summary, we have thirty capital projects that we're working on next year. I mentioned our green fleet plan that we're going to try, we're going to develop. I mentioned our street maintenance services and the wonderful job that they do maintaining the streets and providing storm responses. And lastly, and something more importantly that I really want to bring to the council's attention is our outside agency partnership and our continued effort to work with our outside agencies and have that collaboration. We've been working really hard to improve that communication and that coordination, and it's been paying off a lot. I've been seeing a huge difference with Caltrans and working with them, and it's actually enjoyable working with them, getting solutions and getting past hurdles and issues. And there's still work in progress to get there, but we're, it's, I'm seeing a huge difference. And that's something that I'm going to continue to kind of work on and make sure that's better. And this next slide is the thirty capital projects that we're going to be working on this upcoming year. And if you have a magnifying glass, you can probably see all the signs. Joe, why didn't you? Anyway, some of the things that we, I want to point out is, I think I've already done that already, is the PCH Signal Synchronization Project. That's on there next year, our Civic Center Water Treatment Facility Phase Two project, our permanent skate park. Let's see, Los Flores and PCH Rambla Pacifico intersection. We're doing a series of storm drains throughout the city. We're going to be looking at adding a PCH undercrossing over by Malibu Seafood. We're, what's that? Why, what's? Oh, oh, yeah, there you go. Thanks, Joe. There you go. That's a little bit better. You can kind of see some of the stuff, the highlights. Permanent skate park, the Malibu Bluffs Snack Shack and Storage Building, that's on our list and we're ready to go, working closely with community services. And we're going to be looking and evaluating if city solar is a viable option next year and moving forward and seeing what we can do with that. That is a highlights of all of our capital projects and that's, and any questions?
Comments, questions? Anybody?
I just wanted to thank you for all your group's hard work during the rains. We had a lot of rains that would have caused an awful lot of trouble if people hadn't spent time making sure that all the storm drains were cleared, all the storm basins were cleared beforehand and then you kept right after it. And when you have successive rains like that, it's very easy to get behind the eight ball and you guys, you guys did a great job of staying ahead of it. Thank you.
Doug?
Yeah, from somebody that lives up one of the canyons, I kept expecting our road to get closed in all those rainstorms and it was one of those events where nothing happened and nobody appreciated it because you guys were on top of it. So, thank you very much. One comment I want to make on one of the major items, the City Hall Solar Power. We ask that to come back with an economic reevaluation. Anxious to see that, love to see it be economic, but I think we have to prove it. It's been, I think it's been on the table since Skylar Peak proposed it five years ago. So, in deference to Skylar, we're going to name it for him, we put it up there. Thank you.
Yeah, we have, we've been working on closely with that. We have some couple of options. We're just finalizing some of the details on what we can do for that and we'll be happy to kind of bring that up to you shortly.
Anybody else?
Of course I have a comment. I just want to thank you. You guys are doing a lot of great work out there and really making substantial improvements to our community and I, you know, want to echo what Paul and Doug said that people don't realize how good a job you're doing because we're not seeing the problems and that's just a reflection on the preparation, the previous work from historically in Public Works and the anticipation of things that might be happening. So, I really appreciate that. Appreciate the great work, you know, forging relationships with the outside agencies. Maybe talk to the county about that Malibu Canyon light at Payuma. I hear that's a big issue and problem and probably a lot of the staff could echo that as they're getting stuck in it, so. And are we taking this time to talk about capital improvements or are we going to have a separate thing?
Yeah, this will be at appropriate time. Sure.
Okay. Just a couple of questions ahead. I know there's been a problem out at the Equestrian Park with the guardrail that got burned in the fire. So, is that slated to be replaced? I just, it's something that's out there that's kind of one of those cleanup items that would be great to have taken care of.
So, we have a roof replacement project that's out there and then we'll definitely take a look at that and kind of see, we can kind of wrap that in there or even if it's a small little thing that we can do with our maintenance crew, we can probably do that too. So, we'll take a look at it and kind of see if we, if it's, if it's too big for our crew, then we'll add it with that project and then if not, the crews can probably just fix it.
Yeah, because it's right when you come in. So, it's like one of the first things you see as you're driving in there, so just making sure. We have a pretty facade also with stuff. Another thing that's important, you know, down on the East End, a lot of the dog owners, they don't necessarily have a place to walk their dogs some of the times. Is there a chance that we could incorporate a small dog park into Los Flores Park or find some space for them to have some little off-leash activity occasionally, so?
So, funny you bring that up because that was a topic of discussion today at the Public Works Commission and public adding a dog park over Los Flores and doing that. So, yeah, we can kind of look and evaluate and kind of see where we are with everything. Were your intention to add it to the this year's capital project?
I think that would be great if we could add that to the capital project. I don't know if I need a consensus from the other council members, but I know that the community on the East End of Malibu would certainly appreciate having the opportunity to have that added to their lives over there. And then the budget for the permanent snack shack, I see it's at 200,000. Is that everything you're going to need or is that just for evaluation?
That will get us started and get us going on for, to get a consultant going to do the design, look at everything, give us a cost estimate of everything on what that project would be. I'm estimating that that project may run over 2 million, but I want to make sure that we have, we have a consultant on board to kind of look to make sure we can get to that final spot and get that number in place.
Okay, and is that considering doing prefabs out there or doing a custom building?
Yes.
Even at prefabs, they're running that expensive?
Yep.
Okay. Well, it needs a cleanup out there and it needs it quickly, so whatever we can do to get that done would, I think, be appreciated by everyone. Thank you.
If you need a consensus to investigate dog park, I'll join on that.
Thank you.
Actually, the whole East End needs more park facilities. I know we don't have any vacant land there, but that's one, one of the things we hear all the time is, why don't we have a park? So, if any, if you can find one, let's try and put it in there.
Knock down some houses?
Maybe when you're reimagining Los Flores and Rambla Pacifico, we can, you know, get some parkland out of that.
Anybody else?
Just, and I thought I saw it when I was reviewing stuff before I came here, backup power for the stoplights. I mean, that to me is, you know, I don't know what's going to happen this fall, right? Between power cutoffs and, but I think that's a priority because that deals with the safety of residents on PCH, so.
So, just real quick update on that one, we, that was, that was included in this year's capital project. We were so close of getting that project done and ready to go out to bid. We've been really focusing on PCH's projects and kind of going on, but that project is like 90% done and ready to go. We have a plan in place to put that in for our signals.
Cool.
And hopefully this fall, we'll have something ready to go out.
Okay, thank you. And I'll echo everybody else's comments. What you did during the rainy season was amazing. I mean, there were no problems and I can't get any better than that. So, thank you very, very much.
Well, I just wanted to just, just give recognition to Travis and the maintenance crew and the effort level and everything that they have done, prepping and being prepared. We were really on top of trying to do all that work to make sure we're prepared. But with that, it's, it's also following these things. It's all the we debatement that follows us after, that we're actually going to be chasing and following and doing too, so.
You did good, so thank you very, very much. Anybody else?
Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And not only that, you had a couple of earthquakes to respond to in the last year too as well for the crew to go out and do a quick spot assessment. So, I just wanted to note one other thing that Mr. DeBeau did not note on the CIP list that I think is worth highlighting. We have put $400,000 into the CIP budget for a walkway to connect City Hall down to Stewart Ranch Road there. So, we've seen way too many people having to hoof it up in the middle of the street there, including people who are trying to access the senior center and places like that. So, I asked for that and we've got that included in the budget this year, so hopefully council can support that.
Cool.
You get 100% support from me as being one of those people who used to hoof it up that hill. So, anything we can get to make it nice would be great.
Okay, Joe, back to you. Anything else?
All right, Mayor and members of City Council, unless you have any other questions for us, the next steps are A and F Subcommittee, May 2nd is, and these are tentative dates, but they're on the calendar, it's subject to change, but May 2nd for the proposed budget review, May 20th for the general fund grant application review, and then a quick turnaround from there for the public hearing on May 28th and hopefully no other changes from there and we will be looking to adopt the budget June 24th.
Very good. Bruce?
I just want to reiterate from earlier, I find this presentation that we had tonight so much more usable than all the dry numbers, I mean, which is very important also, but can we get this somehow appended to what's already available publicly so that anyone who wants to look at this can have the option to do that?
Absolutely, and it will be in the record as well, but we can send it around to you. Well, it's a very large file, so actually it'll be better for it to be accessible from the record.
Maybe just on the finance website, the budget presentation, that the PowerPoint be there.
Sure, we can add it to the website. Absolutely.
Okay, anybody else? Mary Ann, you've got an announcement?
Yeah, I just want to announce today is denim day and it's to bring awareness to women who are not believed when they're sexually assaulted, that just because a woman's wearing jeans does not mean she's asking to be assaulted. So, I want to make sure that that's highlighted and take care of our women and make sure that no means no and be respectful of everyone. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no, Joe?
Sorry, that's a hard one to follow. That's very important, but Mayor, I just want to reiterate what we heard tonight. I want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Funds for speed cameras, take a look at our facility use rental rates, potentially increasing those, and then looking at Wi-Fi at the parks, although that's probably a larger project, but taking a look at that and then potentially an estimate for a dog park at Los Flores. Anything else we missed?
Anybody else?
Making sure the budget's big enough for the snack shack.
Okay, any objection? With no objections, we will adjourn. Anybody object? We're adjourned. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.